Good evening. And welcome to this special city council meeting of the city of South San Francisco, December 5th, 2017. The purpose of this meeting is to reorganize the city council of the city of South San Francisco. Ms. Clark, would you please give us the roll call?
Yes. Councilman Garberino.
Here.
Councilman Adiego.
Here.
Councilwoman Matsumoto.
Present.
Vice Mayor Normandy.
Present.
Mayor Gupta.
Present, thank you very much. And at this time, I'd like for you to please join me and stand up and welcome the colors. So I'd like to invite South San Francisco Police Explorers to now post the colors.
Colgar, stand, hut! Colgar, Jerry, hut! Colgar, forward, march!
Thank you very much. I'd like to have you keep on standing while we go through our pledge of allegiance and like to invite Denise Farnikis to lead us in that.
It's being recorded. What? It's being recorded. Really? Okay. You're all standing, okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please sit down. Thank you Denise. I now like to have Mariano Valentin Gonzalez, the grandson of former Mayor Pedro Gonzalez, come up to sing the Star Spangled Banner.
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light What so proudly we hailed At the twilight's last gleaming Whose broad stripes and bright stars Through the perilous fight Were the ramparts we'd watched Were so gallantly streaming And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night That our flag was still there Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave O'er the land of the free And the home of the brave?
It does show South San Francisco has lot of talents, lot of talents. And family of former Mayor Pedro Gonzalez is keeping that talent alive. I'd like to take at this time moment to recognize a few elected folks who have come and joined us today. I want to thank all of them, and I'd like to recognize them one at a time. San Mateo County Supervisor Dave Pine. San Mateo County Supervisor Dave Canapa. Representative from Senator Jerry Hill's office, Jeffrey Lo. Representative from Senator Scott Wiener's office, Frances Jean. Representative from Congresswoman Jackie Spears office, Mark Nagalas. And we have a number of people who are arriving or have just arrived. My good friend and council member from Belmont, Charles. And from Millbrae, council member Wayne Lee. And from our school district, we have a number of people, and some of them I met, some of them I might have missed. So if I don't get to your name, please stand up and I will recognize you. First of all, I'd like to start with Superintendent Dr. Shantara Moore. Then from the school board itself, school board member Danalon Lejeune. Mr. John Baker. And also, I see Rosa Acosta. And from the county school office, we have Maurice Goodman here. And from our Harbor district, we have... We have Virginia Chang Kirali. And also, we have from our own city, our city treasurer Frank Reson. And I really don't want to make sure that I don't want to miss, and she's the most important person to keep this thing running, functioning properly, and that is our city clerk Krista Martinelli. We have also from county schools Hector Camacho. If I've left anybody's name, that's my fault. Please stand up so we can correct it.
I think I did alright.
Either you're too shy, or I did alright. Well, anyway, thank you very much, all of you, for coming down here. At this time, I'd like to invite any public comments on the items on the agenda for this Seeing as though there are no public comments, we'll proceed. The purpose of this meeting, as I have already said, is to recognize the South San Francisco, reorganize the South San Francisco City Council. I'll now ask the city clerk to read the Agenda Item 1.
Reorganization of the City Council, Item A, Remarks of outgoing mayor.
This is the end of the journey, short journey, but it's going to come back again. It's not going to end so soon, but a small part of it. After one year of my mayorship of this great city of South San Francisco, I can assure all of you, all of you, that all the council members sitting on the dais here, and you all as a community are model of what other cities always strive for. You have pride, you have dedication, you have friendship, and you have cooperation. In the next few minutes of this item, I'd like to summarize for you my personal goals that I have realized during this last year, and some of the unexpected challenges that I had not thought about when I entered this. First, let me summarize my personal goals that have been realized to my satisfaction. I'm a strong believer in climate protection. In 2016, I advocated very strongly that South San Francisco should join Peninsula Clean Energy as a member of the JPA. In one year since then, South San Franciscans have reduced their carbon emissions by 97 million pounds. That's the amount of gas emission of 33,000 cars, passenger vehicles, running for one whole year. You should be proud of that. And to top it off, to top it off, we saved $2.8 million in our electricity bill at the same time. Not bad. Second, my personal goal. I'm a strong believer in better education, creating a path for our young people to a career, successful career, in our world-renowned biotech technology industry across the Highway 101. Well, 2017 saw a brand-new building come up in South San Francisco High School to meet that goal, called Science Garage, built by Genentech at the cost of $7.8 million. It will provide our high school kids access to specialized equipment that is only available to professional and researchers in the field. Just imagine, our high school kids are going to have access to that. Not only that, Genentech's volunteer support Science Garage students by sharing what they have learned. They will come to the school. What more can I ask for my little goal for 2017? Thank you, Genentech. Another favorite of mine that happened this year is relatively modest in terms of projects in the city, but it's near and dear to me. And it's also a very interesting achievement for all the history buffs, and I know quite a few of them here in South San Francisco. We have designed and created a self-guided walking tour of major historic sites along Grand Avenue with maps, flags on the building, and markers on the sidewalk, so you can bring your friends and show how great our Grand Avenue is. Frankly, the city reached so many major milestones in one year, and any one of those milestones, any one of them, would have been sufficient to make a city pride, proud, anyone. But we, just to count the major ones, we counted, we made three of them in one year. We started the construction of new Caltrain station, we initiated a new civic center, and we ground, we had a groundbreaking of new Oyster Point development in the beautiful area of Oyster Point. And you know, all of these, and many others, we have done this year, will not only benefit us, but our future generations to generations to generations of South San Francisco. I'm so proud of all those achievements that our little city has accomplished in one year. But we had our challenges. We had our challenges. One such challenge was how to make our diverse community feel secure in the face of divisive national policies. Our council strongly believes that diversity is our strength and has taken actions to implement that belief. Not only the council, our community believes in that diversity. Just look at the dais of the council, look at the diversity sitting there. Second challenge was the new state laws on marijuana, recreational marijuana. And frankly, our council wants to do it very carefully. We are forced to evaluate how our community feels about those new laws and new freedoms and the issues involved. So we, as a council, as a responsible council, have decided to study the issue very carefully before we make long-term changes in the way we do things here. And most of all, I wanted to ask your indulgence in one of the things that is happening on the side, besides all the good things we are doing, and that is, lot of you are alarmed by the pace of the change we are doing in the city. Let me ask for your patience. These are temporary problems. Our city is built on our capability to innovate and adapt to new frontiers when needed, and that is what we are doing now. We have and will continue to remain a resilient city. We have a lot to be proud of, and more importantly, lot of, lot to look forward to. To close, it's been a year of pride for me personally. A first-generation, 21-year-old immigrant from India landed in this country 53 years ago with ambition, good education, and nothing else. The pride is not only for me, but for hundreds of my friends and family around the globe. Thank you, South San Francisco community, for giving me that honor. Lastly, I could not have pursued this endeavor had it not been for my dear wife Kum Kum. I'd like to ask her to come up here so that we can recognize her. Thank you very much. I noticed while I was there on the podium, there are some more VIPs who have arrived. So I'd like to just mention, Daly City Mayor Glenn Sylvester is here. And Daly City Vice Mayor Justin Manalo is here. Next item.
Item 1B, nominations for mayor, close of nominations, appointment.
So we have the next item, and I'll be seeking a motion from the council members.
Yep, it is my honor and privilege to nominate Vice Mayor Liza Normandy for our mayor for 2018.
And it would be my joy to second that nomination.
So we have a nomination for the mayor for next year, Vice Mayor Liza Normandy, moved by Councilmember Carol Matsumoto and seconded by Councilmember Mark Adiego. We'll have the roll call vote.
Councilwoman Matsumoto.
Aye.
Councilman Garberino.
Aye.
Mayor Gupta.
I just want to say, of course, yes, but also, after working with her for one full year, I know that she'll be fantastic, great mayor. Thank you very much.
Councilman Adiego.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Normandy.
Next one.
Item 1C, nominations for Vice Mayor, close of nominations, appointment.
Mr. Mayor, or Madam Mayor, I should say, it's my pleasure and honor to nominate my good colleague and my good friend and colleague Carol Matsumoto for the office of Mayor Protem.
Thank you.
Do I hear a second?
No second.
I will make the second. I wanted to give somebody a chance to jump in, but I'm so proud to have, you know what happens? Informally, we select the mayors for the next year, but informally, we basically select mayors for the next two years. The Vice Mayor will become mayor year after the, next. So I'm so proud to have Councilmember Matsumoto, very experienced mayor, too.
And if I may add, I think there's a historical moment. We have two Asian-American females serving as mayor and vice mayor, and Carol, your memory's a lot longer than mine. Is this the first in the county? Yes. So once again, we make history.
Just to, just to complete the whole ritual, could we have the roll call vote, please?
Councilman Garberino.
Aye.
Councilman Adiego.
Yes.
Mayor Normandy.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gupta.
Yes.
Councilwoman Matsumoto.
So we, before we go to the next item, I'd like to congratulate on, for myself, both the incoming mayor and vice mayor, and I also want to congratulate the residents and community of South San Francisco for having such a strong team to lead them for the next year. Next item.
Item 1D, oaths of office administered to incoming Mayor Protem and mayor.
So could I please ask Honorable Rosa Acosta to come up to the front to swear in Mayor Protem? Carol Matsumoto?
Hi, Carol. You face that way. Raise your right hand.
The hand.
Raise your right hand and state your name.
Aye.
Aye, Carol Matsumoto.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will.
And that I will.
Well and faithfully.
Well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
On which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Mayor Protem, would you please just stay there for a little bit?
I just had to repeat, now I have to read.
Alright. Yeah, I'll be asking Mayor Protem, Carol Matsumoto, to swear in Mayor Liza Normandy.
If you'll raise your right hand and repeat after me, I state your name.
I, Liza Normandy.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the State of California.
And the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the State of California.
And the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the State of California.
And the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservations.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well.
That I will well.
And faithfully.
And faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which.
Upon which I am about to enter.
I am about to enter. And I get to say, I now, I now pronounce you mayor of the awesome city of South San Francisco. You go, girl!
This is always my favorite seat, can't I just stay here for the rest of the day? I love the end. Rats. I'm sorry. Tradition.
Item 1E, incoming Mayor Protem's remarks.
Oh, yes, okay.
You'd like to go down?
No, I'd like to stay here.
Alright, okay.
Leave this chance of falling down the stairs or tripping. First of all, I can't, I really can't begin to tell you how pleased and proud I am to be serving on this council and with our new member, with our new mayor, Liza Normandy. I remember vividly when we first met, she was attending the Citizens Academy, and when I walked by her, I said, because she was a known Marx person, she's like Annie Oakley. So I walked by her and I go, "I want to be you." And she turns around immediately and says, "I want to be you." So the next day, I called my good friend and fellow council member, Joe Farnikis, and I said, "We have a candidate for school board." We start off, you know, and so we ran Liza, and Liza won. She served two years as the school board president, and next came the city council. And it was, there were a lot of candidates in the race, and Liza won without any congressional and state endorsements, and as well as newspapers. This shows that she is not only tenacious, she has true grit, and she's committed. Once, once she commits, she does it. And as was mentioned earlier, today we're making history. I mean, especially in South San Francisco, which historically has been male-oriented, male-dominated. We, and I love my fellow council male members as well, but, but two women serving as mayor and Mayor Protem and Asians to boot, and this is the first time in the city's 109th year histories, history. I think this speaks volumes. And, and, and the mayor just not too long ago held a forum to encourage women in our city to step up. And I think, at least what I, I mean, thank you for doing that, but I think what I learned is, it's frightening, it's frightening, whether you're a woman or a male, to put yourself out there and, and, and not to have... She served two years as the school board president, and next came the city council. And it was, there were a lot of candidates in the race, and Liza won without any congressional and state endorsements and as well as newspapers. This shows that she is not only tenacious, she has true grit, and she's committed. Once, once she commits, she does it. And as was mentioned earlier, today we're making history. I mean, especially in South San Francisco, which historically has been male-oriented, And I love my fellow council male members as well. But, but two women serving as mayor and Mayor Pro Tem and Asians to boot. And this is the first time in the city's 109th year histories, history. I think this speaks volumes. And, and, and the mayor just not too long ago held a forum to encourage women in our city to step up. And I think, at least what I, I mean, thank you for doing that, but I think what I learned is, it's frightening, it's frightening whether you're a woman or a male, to put yourself out there and, and, and not to have or know that there's going to be someone there to support you. And this is what we heard from a lot of the women. We want to take this step, but will you be there for us? And so all of us, and, and, and all you men just have to, lot of you are fathers of daughters, husbands, and you have sisters, so I don't care if this is boring to you, too bad. But, but I think it's important. We're hearing now as Congresswoman's spirit is, you know, with what she's trying to get accomplished in, in Congress on the sexual harassment and accountability, it's important, it's important to have a different perspective. I've heard, I've heard people say, why didn't these women speak up? Why has it taken them 30 years or so? I'll tell you why. It's difficult. When I came, when I was first elected to this city, I was sexually harassed by a department head, and I didn't say anything. And I debated about saying it tonight, but you keep, when you're new, you keep your mouth shut because you don't know. But, so what I want to say is, this is going to be a sea change, and I want to encourage, I want to encourage people of color, sexual orientation, women, please, in South San Francisco, we are family, we are strong, and we will be there for you. And this speaks well of Liza, who has overcome so much diversity, and Rosa Acosta. Rosa is another person that I had mentored, and she has overcome terrific obstacles in her life. She started as an admin assistant in Public Works. She is, she finished and got her degree at Notre Dame. She ran for school board, and now she's a city clerk of Pinole. Hello, folks, it's doable. So whether or not you're female or, or, or different diversities, this city is going to support you. So start here, and we're there for you. We, as, as a former mayor said before, we were one of the cities that passed, beside doing a diversity resolution. We put our money where our mouth is. We passed the resolution. We formed a committee. We are moving forward with programs, et cetera. It's just not a piece of paper. I am pleased that within our own city department, kudos to our police department, because I'm, I've always been an advocate from, for this. But our, our police department, if you look at, it represents our community, both in ethnicities and gender. So thank you, Jeff Asapati, and your predecessors. It, it, it's who we are. I, I guess I was supposed to lay out, am I supposed to lay out what I want to work for? I'm there to support Liza 120%, of course. But my focus has been transportation, but I want to move from that. I want to, I want, I want to move into more diversity issues, social justice. I want to see some, so all you small business people, don't worry. I want to see minimum rate for, we'll start at the city. You, you, you lead by example, but there are a lot of things that I want to concentrate on our neighborhoods. We have, we have been touted and, and we've been showcasing biotech. We are the, one of three, three cities, South San Francisco, Cambridge, Massachusetts, and Cambridge, UK, as having the largest biotech clusters in the world. And we've done that. Now it's time to focus on our neighborhoods. And we've got, over time, as you know, we're doing well, but Liza and I feel, I mean, can I say Liza instead of mayor?
Sure.
Okay. We walk the neighborhoods and, and so that's going to be my focus beside backing her up, is I want to start concentrating on our neighborhoods. We want to look at, at the streets. We want to look at the sidewalks. We, we've always been upfront, out in front on, on things for ADA. We've been good with the curb cuts, et cetera. But that's where my focus is going to be for this next coming year.
Next item.
So thank you and good evening. This is the moment, this very moment is what I've been waiting for since 2004, when I met Mayor Carol Matsumoto. I said then, many years ago, I wanted to be like her, as she mentioned, to be mayor. And here I am, nearly 14 years later, and the third female mayor for the city of South San Francisco. Thank you to those who have shared my journey, and many of you are here with me tonight. For those who know me, I've spent the past 25 years in the hospitality industry, planning events, picking out food, which I was, what is, what I do best, the little details. I hope you will agree with me afterwards when you make your way into the atrium. However, the planning stages of this evening allows the mayor-in-waiting to decide the menu, the logistics of the program, and is very, what's very important to me is to include some special people in that program. First, Mariano Gonzalez, the grandson of former mayor Pedro Gonzalez. Thank you for seeing the Star Spangled Banner. And thank you to you and your family for sharing this evening with us. Second, Denise Fornikis. While many of us know Denise, Denise is a wife of former mayor Joseph Fornikis, rest in peace. It was Mayor Pro Tem Matsumoto who introduced me to Mayor Fornikis in 2006, and where Joe was instrumental in my campaign for the South San Francisco Unified School District. I didn't know Joe, and I asked him, why are you helping me? Joe said, in order for people to want to live and work in South San Francisco, we need good schools and a partnership with our school district, plus Carol told me to. Through hard work and frequent calls from Joe and Carol to check in with me, I won. I came in second, and I know Joe is here with us tonight in spirit. Thank you, thank you Denise for seeing the Pledge of Allegiance, which meant so much to me. I share this to reflect that while we are all here today, I cannot forget those who I met along the way and who have been with me from day one. Lastly, thank you to this council for their vote of confidence. I am fortunate to have four former mayors to serve with me, with many years of experience, knowledge, and institutional memory. I will take a moment to read from a program from the 50th Wilderness School reunion that I attended and a graduate of the program and a graduate of Jefferson High School. You will then understand why I chose this reading. This is the true joy in life, the being used for a purpose, recognized by yourself as the mighty one, the being thoroughly worn out before you're thrown on the scrap heap and being a force of nature instead of a feverish, selfish little claw at alignments and grievances complaining that the world will not devote itself to making you happy. I am in the opinion that my life belongs to the whole community, and as long as I live, it is my privilege to do whatever I can. I want to be thoroughly used at when I die, for the harder I work, the more I love. I rejoice in life for its own sake. Life is not a brief candle to me, it's sort of a splendid torch, for which I got a hold of for the moment. I want to make it burn as brightly as possible before handing it to next future generations. George Bernard Shaw. That reading seems to sum it all up. In order to be a part of change, you must be changed. You must have purpose, devotion, commitment, community, work hard, and love. Decisions that we make as elected officials may not be easy ones, but through collaboration and consensus, we make the best decisions that impact the quality of life for South San Franciscans. We have a lot of work ahead of us, and there is no doubt, in order to get the job done, we need our community. Let's come together, oh, there's a baby in the back, and make South San Francisco better tomorrow for future generations. Thank you for sharing this special evening with us, and it is in my honor and privilege as your mayor, I look forward to representing our city, our home.
Item 2, presentation to outgoing mayor.
I'm going to put our former mayor, Pradeep Gupta, right in front here, so any other photo, people would want to take some shots. Whereas on December 7, 2016, the South San Francisco City Council reorganized at the South San Francisco Municipal Service Building Council Chambers and appointed Mayor Gupta mayor. And Pradeep Gupta was appointed to the South San Francisco City Council for one term on December 31, 2012, and subsequently elected in November 2013 for a full four-year term. And Pradeep Gupta, prior to his appointment to city council, was on the South San Francisco Planning Commission for three years and served in the head role of commission chair in 2011. And Mayor Gupta served on various subcommittees of the council and held many regional assignments. Under Mayor Gupta's leadership, park and recreation initiatives included renovations of portions of Brentwood Park, total rehabilitation of the Pee Wee baseball field, and replacement of the playground equipment, Youth Government Day 2017, supported senior-related functions, exemplified the city's healthy living, healthy city initiative by supporting Parks Alive, Streets Alive, Arbor Day, coastal cleanup, and participating in the 44th Annual Thanksgiving 5K Fund Run, capturing the third-place ribbon in his division. You didn't know they were going to add that in, huh? Mayor Gupta, who is a staunch advocate of solid educational foundation for children, supported libraries initiatives including the Big Lift, inspiring summer programs that helped more than 400 students improve their reading and science skills, coronation of the weekly summer STEM events at the Community Learning Center, and establishment of Makerspace at Grand Avenue Library. In addition, he helped to celebrate and preserve the city's rich history through the installation of historical markers along our downtown corridor, launching the Grand Walk. Mayor Gupta was instrumental in the following Public Works Initiative, South Linden Avenue Caltrain Grade Separation, the Civic Center Plaza Underground Utility District, Brentwood Parking Lot Improvements, Sea Level Rise Study and Planning, US 101 Produce Alley Interchange Project, the ESA 101 Traffic Model Update, Caltrain Station Improvement Project, the Bike Share Program, South Airport Boulevard Bridge Replacement, the Downtown Truck Restriction Study, among many other projects. And Mayor Gupta spearheaded the continued growth of biotech initiatives, such as the Bio International Convention, the Oyster Point Project, and several other biotech businesses, attraction expansion efforts. He has also enhanced the quality of life for all residents of South San Francisco, which led the groundbreaking of Sarus Regis, the Rotary Senior Housing, Caltrain Station, Genesis Tower, the North Tower, Merck, the Gateway of Pacific, and his leadership drove the completion of HCP Cove, AC Marriott Hotel, Costco Business Center, and Dunkin' Donuts. I did not write that in there, it was in there. Whereas Mayor Gupta's term enhanced public safety and fire protection initiatives for South San Francisco residents by supporting Kaiser Family Day at Orange Park, Gate Path Academy, the Police Association, implementation of the body-worn cameras, marijuana ordinance, as well as the Fire Prevention Week activities and poster contests. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council of the city of South San Francisco recognizes Mayor Pradeep Gupta for his selfish dedication to our community, his service exemplified his generous contributions, time, energy to our residents of South San Francisco. Be it therefore resolved that the city council acknowledges with deep appreciation, respect, and gratitude, Pradeep Gupta's term as mayor of the city of South San Francisco from December 7, 2016 to December 5, 2017.
Thank you.
So we're going to trade. We're not done yet. Mayor Gupta, we have in your appreciate, the gavel, that's mounted, so you won't be able to use it.
I love that.
And as a token of our appreciation from the council, he selected a watch, so there you go.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Mayor Liza Normandy. I just wanted to say that all those things she read in that resolution are not really my achievements. They are achievements of the community, they are achievements of the council, they are achievement of the staff of the city of South San Francisco. Thank you very much.
So I have one official duty, but before I do, it is without gratitude that I make sure I say thank you to the Park and Rec staff, Leslie Arroyo, Marie Batia, Mike and Mike and Lisa for the flowers. I know I'm leaving some people out, but thank you so much for everything that you have assisted me with. So my official duty, at this time, I now adjourn the meeting and encourage everyone to join us in the atrium for our reception.